I'll ask if there are any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof this evening, say none. Approval of the council minutes? No, we don't have any because there's no date, I see that. And there is no business arising out of those minutes. So we'll move on to the Court of Revision, and I would ask the deputy mayor to take over that.
Thank you, worthy mayor. And before we start, just that Mayor McDonald and councillor Dunn are not part of this committee. So I'd like to open up the Court of Revisions, I'm looking for a motion to do that, councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Jacobs, all in favor? And carried, thank you. This is the Court of Revisions for an engineer's report for the Gosling Drain. And our proponents are, no, our appellants, I'm going to use this term, are there now. So Alan, you want to take it away, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject for report was adopted by council March the 12th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear appeals on the assessment schedules that were included in that report. At the moment, up to this moment, we have not received any appeals. And Holiday Pearson is here from Baird AE to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Alan. Before there's any questions, does anybody have disclosure of pecuniary interest or nature thereof? Saying none, thank you. How they continue? If not, any questions from either one? Okay, we have a motion, there's suggested recommendation, moved by councillor Jacobs, supported by councillor Hammond. Any questions on that motion? All in favor? And carried. I'm looking now for a motion to close the Court of Revisions. Councillor Bulcussen, seconded by councillor Thiessen, all in favor? Carried, worthy mayor.
That was quick and clean, thank you both very much for...
Just continue it though, right?
I will try and keep up your, the standard that you set while I was gone, I appreciate that, deputy mayor. So we're moving on to a presentation by the Essex Region Conservation Authority. Welcome, gentlemen. Mr. Weimar, Mr. Bernie.
Thank you, I brought the big guns in in case there's some questions that I can't answer, so. But good evening, Mayor McDonald and council. The Institute for Sustainable Communities recognizes that throughout the world people want the same things: access to clean air and water, economic opportunities, a safe and healthy place to raise their kids, shelter, lifelong learning, a sense of community, and the ability to have a say in the decisions that affect their lives. We recognize that these are essential to create and sustain Essex Region as the Place for Life, and we are working with municipalities, foundations, landowners, agencies, stakeholders, and many other partners to realize these goals. In Essex Region, our programs continue to demonstrate an ongoing and consistent response to very real and serious problems and challenges that we face: land degradation, loss of natural area cover, flooding and erosion. These were some of the same challenges we faced on establishment. Today, we have new issues such as water quality in the Great Lakes, climate adaptation, sustainable growth and development. We must consider all of these in now meeting the needs of municipalities. Each year, we continue to develop and deliver programs and projects that address those challenges. 2018 was no different, as you'll see in our annual report video and annual report, which we could share now, and then I'll come back and talk about some of our plans for 2019. And we can make this available as well for council to look at at a later date if... Yeah, let's circulate that instead, and you can have a look at it at your convenience. The work that we do relies on a very strong board, and I'd certainly like to thank and welcome back Deputy Mayor Verbeke, who does double time as liaison with our Source Protection Committee, and also councillor Jacobs. We look forward to working with both of you and implementing our ambitious agenda for 2019. Essex continues to be served well by your strong involvement at IRCA, and as a side note, we certainly appreciate the relationship we've built now with your administration as well. In 2016, we launched a new 10-year strategic plan that guides all of our actions. That plan was based on five things that we heard from people in the community that they were concerned about, and I'd like to highlight some of the actions we'll be taking on this year in each of those key areas. First, we heard that climate will continue to change and we must prepare to adapt to its impacts. In 2019, our climate change specialists will continue to research regional vulnerabilities, impacts, and best practices, and lead the development of a regional climate change plan with all of our partners to identify implementation priorities and potential funding supports. We have a report going to our board for our Thursday night meetings that provides some further update on the progress that we've made with respect to that file. We're also anticipating record-high water levels again this year on Lake Erie, and here in Leamington in particular, we remember the impacts of that last year. We'll be updating our regional flood contingency plans and working again with municipalities on flood response. We're also providing technical support to all municipalities on flood control, flood infrastructure, master drainage, stormwater, and hazard mapping studies. Our new regulations in engineering capacity will continue to provide added support for stormwater reviews, drainage reviews, and related engineering and infrastructure reviews. We're also working to develop a shared climate station network with municipalities and other partners to provide more timely advance warnings, response, and ultimately, reporting on the impacts of the storm events that we do have. Second thing we heard from the community is that how the Great Lakes are the most important resource, and we must do more to improve the health of our watersheds. Our 2019 budget includes additional support for research, monitoring, and building partnerships, and managing and maintaining data information systems, which is critical for evidence-based decision-making. IRCA is also an effective delivery agent in the Lake Erie Action Plan for Reducing Phosphorus, and the 2019 budget includes federal funding to support agricultural BMPs and associated monitoring and science in the Lake Erie watershed. We will again restore more than 60 acres of forest and prairie habitat to improve connections and build ecosystem resilience and benefit water quality, climate change, and quality of life, and part of the work that we do will be continuing to monitoring the phosphorus levels getting into Lake Erie at our innovative 10-acre University of Windsor Alumni Association wetland here in Leamington at Hillman Marsh Conservation Area project that we've implemented with the University of Windsor through support from our foundation. We'll also be working with the Detroit River Canadian Cleanup and building on efforts to delist the Detroit River as a designated environmental area of concern. The goal is there, about a five-year plan, and we're going to be in 2019 rehabilitating a 70-acre wetland on the Canard River and creating new fish habitat on the city of Windsor's Pesh Island. Third, people told us our landscapes and habitats are among the most significant in Canada, and more action is needed to protect them. In 2019, we're going to be completing our Cedar Creek Conservation Area Management Plan through our new Conservation Services Advisory Board and beginning to work on a new management plan for Hillman Marsh. We're also developing business plans for the John Arpark Homestead and Holiday Beach Conservation Areas to identify and confirm infrastructure needs and investments in visitor service where there is a business case to support that investment. A lot of our infrastructure and conservation areas and the infrastructure replacement plan for those pieces of infrastructure are based on needs of visitors from 20 to 30 years ago, and we need to reassess what our visitor services needs are in those facilities, in those areas, and provide the appropriate facilities. The 2019 budget also restores more of our Clean Water Green Spaces acquisition funding to support securment of key lands with partnership funding and keeping with our land securment strategy. And again, as usual, we'll be managing 19 conservation areas and over 80 kilometers of greenways, and providing curriculum-based outdoor education for more than 10,000 elementary and secondary school students, including delivery of the new Environmental Special High Skills major certifications and new curriculum programming with our indigenous partners. Fourth, we need to ensure our communities grow and expand sustainably. In 2019, we'll complete consultation and finalize development of our Place for Life policies. That was the set of policies that integrated all of our planning and regulatory direction along with our program policies so that we can integrate our planning, development, and programs in one area. We'll be working with Lake Shore and Tecumseh to undertake a Lake St. Clair shoreline management plan, Town of Kingsville to finalize a natural heritage background study as part of the town's official plan updates, and provide advice and direction to all member municipalities on over 750 planning app applications. We'll also be completing reviews of over 1,000 Section 28 permit applications for stormwater management, commercial, industrial, and residential development, large-scale greenhouse developments, over 150 municipal drainage act reviews, and respond to over 1,300 general water resource-related requests. Finally, we heard that IRCA is a sustainable, resilient, and valued agency. In 2019, we'll be updating our tangible capital asset inventory and our multi-year capital plan based on replacement schedules, asset needs, and as I mentioned, program needs associated with infrastructure at our conservation areas. Part of the improvements that we'll be making in 2019 are upgrades at Holiday Beach Conservation Area, including construction of a new workshop and beginning to resurface the roads with new tar and chip, installing a new natural playground with support from Enbridge, and an outdoor classroom, again with support from the University of Windsor Alumni Association. Both of those projects gained through the Essex Region Conservation Foundation's Place for Life campaign. We'll also undertake an engineering study to assess the shoreline at John Arpark Homestead Conservation Area. We'll continue to use our website as a platform to improve customer service, usability, and accessibility, and efficiency through web-based tools. In 2018, we introduced an online application system, so now people can actually submit an application through, for a permit or for a review on our, through our website. So we're moving towards that more digital world. We're also adding new capacity related to applicant and customer service and focusing front desk and reception and related internal support functions, again with the idea of improving our customer service. We'll be reviewing and updating all of our operational administrative policies to ensure consistency with legislation, best sector best practices, and authority practices, and developing a new employee handbook to summarize all of our policies that we have in place. Our 2019 budget is $7.7 million, which includes a total levy contribution of about $3.2 million. That's an increase of $89,000 or 32 cents per person, which brings it to a total of $10 per person. The budget includes almost $2.3 million in leverage funding, and when combined with fee-for-service revenues, more than 60% of IRCA's overall budget is funded through non-levy funding. That places IRCA again in the top 10 of all 36 conservation authorities in terms of revenues and programs that we bring into our region. At the same time, our operational levy funds approximately one-third of our operations, and that places IRCA in the bottom five of all conservation authorities, and well below the provincial average, which is about 52% in 2018. While this builds a strong case for support, it's only enough to maintain the status quo. It's not enough to significantly improve the health of our watersheds, keep our beaches open more, reduce phosphorus and blue-green algae in our lakes, provide open spaces and trails that are accessible for people to use, connect and restore forests, wetlands, and habitats. These are essential for sustainable communities to build resilience to climate change, and importantly, attracting and retaining the talent this region desires, as the Institute for Sustainable Communities noted at the beginning. Further, as funding programs change and evolve with changes in government priorities who are reduced or eliminated and as new interests seek funding, it's harder to continue to support key programs with external supports, programs that are funded by levy in other conservation authorities. Sustaining the Place for Life is not our work alone, it's what we do together with municipalities, our neighbors, our universities, our colleges, our donors, our regional and local agencies, and the many other partners we work with. We do need to celebrate our successes, and there have been many, but we also need to increase the scope, scale, and intensity of our joint efforts to create a place we can be proud of and celebrate, one that we can call home for life. Thank you for the chance to speak with you this evening, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if there are any, or bring Tim up if there's some hard questions as I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Weimar. Council questions or comments? Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you for that. The little packet that we were given here, some of the information was cut off. I was looking at the 2000, I was hoping to hear the 2018 stats for average response time for permits days. I see in 2016 it was 10, then 9.13 for 2017, but 18 is cut off. Can you tell me how that trend, how that is trending?
It's right around the same mark. I don't have the number exactly in front of me, but it's around that 10-day response period. That's a period that's well within the Conservation Authority Liaison Protocol chapters that have been developed by the ministry and the guidelines that have been developed for the ministry that actually identifies 30 days for providing responses to permits. So the goal that we have is certainly much shorter than that and well within those timelines.
So less than 10 days is the average?
About 10 days or slightly over 10 days for 2018.
All right, then, thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Richard, thank you for attending tonight. And just a question, you had touched on the high water levels expected again for this year. Are they expected to be higher Great Lakes than they were last year?
Yes, is the short answer to that one. You, through Canada Water Survey, as well as the NOAA organization in the States, they monitor those water levels, and they are predicting that the water levels will be as high, if not higher, this year as they were last year.
So that then again creates, and I'm going to ask a question even though I'm sure I know the answer to it already, is there any new funding available for lake shore preservation and damage due to high water levels?
The, we certainly continue to talk about that with the province, and currently, you know, we're all looking forward to seeing what may or may not be included in the budget that the province is expected to deliver on Thursday. There's, you know, there's water erosion control infrastructure programs that have been available to conservation authorities for public infrastructure and WECI-controlled infrastructure. We don't have funding for those programs set yet for 2019. I know the municipality, as well as Kingsville and others, and including ourselves, have asked the province to reconsider and bring back potentially the Shoreline Property Owners' Assistance Act in areas where it makes sense. That program provided support for landowners over a 10-year period. In some cases, depending on the location in the lake, the infrastructure may be failing again within that 10-year period, so in some cases, it may not be the appropriate tool for those situations. So it's, it's one of those programs that you have to take a look at in terms of how best does it fit.
Councillor Thiessen?
Under your landscapes and habitats, I noticed the land holdings have increased over the last couple of years. Are you actively out looking for land adjacent to some of your properties, or do you rely on donations, or how do you acquire land?
About five years ago, we developed a land securment strategy, which was along the same time that we worked with the town, or with the County of Essex on the Essex Natural, Essex Region Natural Heritage System Study. So we were able to bring a lot of science to the table in terms of identifying where our priorities should be, and it was a GIS exercise, an evidence-based exercise that looked at adjacency to existing conservation areas, adjacency to drains and streams and rivers, and set those as higher priorities than other areas. So the land securment program identifies those priority areas with us. We often, and I often get calls from people saying, "You want to buy my land," and that's my first guide, is to take a look at it and see where that land exists, and that determines where my next discussion is. In some cases, we encourage the landowner to take a look at some of our existing other programs that may be able to, you know, through restoration, maybe provide some tax incentives through the province, through conservation land tax. In some cases, we encourage donation of lands, which we've been successful at in the past. In other cases, where it does make sense and where there is potentially a threat from development, we'll take a look at it and see if we can line up some partners in order to acquire those lands. So traditionally, we've, we've been able to match dollars that we have locally with federal or provincial programs. Case in point, with the federal program, the priority shifted in 2018, 19, where they're now looking at, starting point for discussions around land securment is at 1,000 hectares. Certainly, in Southern Ontario, that's very difficult to attain, so we've tried to be creative with eight or nine of our Conservation Authority colleagues and put in a joint proposal to take a look at matching dollars for land acquisition where it makes sense.
Councillor Wilkinson, further?
One last one, just wondering what IRCA's role is when it comes to helping us out with the phragmites?
Well, we certainly try to look after it in our own conservation areas where we can, and you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we did a program out at Hillman Marsh where we were able to draw down the one cell, and that allowed us to apply a herbicide that wouldn't otherwise be allowed because of, it's not allowed to be applied currently in wet conditions. We do sit on the invasive species and the phragmites species provincial board or provincial committees, and we know through those works that there are efforts by BASF to have a product licensed for use in Canada. Currently, it's not available for use in Canada because of its use, or it's not allowed to be used in wet conditions, and certainly, phragmites likes to live in wet conditions, so it's a challenging one to deal with. It is one, though, because of this, the state and the systemic perspective of phragmites, it's one that needs to be done in much greater scale, more than that at a site scale as we have been able to do. So we've certainly been encouraging and, you know, even talking to federal and provincial governments around trying to facilitate that approval of that product so that it can be applied here in Canada. It's applied in the States, so it's, there's a track record there. There have been some case studies where they have taken a look at that. But beyond that, that's sort of our advocacy role in terms of, you know, making sure that everyone is aware of the impact to drainage, the impact to wetlands, the impact to biodiversity, the impact to species, the impact endangered species. It's a tremendous list of impact that invasive has, and certainly, we, we're all for trying to find ways of controlling it.
If I could, Richard, I'd just like to have you speak a little bit to the workload of the greenhouse growth on IRCA staff. We have found waiting for approval sometimes to be somewhat problematic. I'd like it, I'd like to hear it from your point of view, what you see as your own holdups, what you see as hurdles, what you see as improvements that can be made to timelines, et cetera. I think we always hear the buck being passed outside agencies, I'm not talking our staff, I'm just saying outside agencies. So do, I'd like to hear it from, from IRCA's point of view, whether that's you or Mr. Bernie, I think we all, we all need to hear that, because we are so involved, this is our economic development driver. We need to know what our, what our weak points are, what our Achilles heel is, and if it's you, we need, we need to work together. So if I can be so frank as to ask that question, we could use some answers.
Well, then I'll start, and Mr. Bernie here can continue. I think the, the best thing that we did collectively was the study last year that took a look at what are the broad impacts on drainage from this land use change, or this non-land use change, I should say, but this change in land cover that has had an impact and does have an impact on drainage and water courses, as well as natural hazard, which, or natural heritage, I should say, which is still a municipal issue. So getting that study underway, I know, was challenging for all, the municipality as well as the greenhouse sector. There were delays in that study due to the consultant and some of the availability of the resources that they needed to complete that study. That study, though, once done, really simplified the process a lot for everyone, because as we argued and advocated from the beginning, it provided the answers at the beginning, so not everyone would have to go through a similar process. So that was the starting point, and I think that has significantly smoothed the process. I think we're all in this situation right now, and I hear from, from the greenhouse sector where they're passing the buck elsewhere. So I think it's, it's an opportunity to pass the buck wherever the buck might be passed to, if I can say that. And, you know, we're all, I know, working very hard. We've added capacity, as I mentioned, in IRCA with our new watershed engineering staff, in part, in large part, to deal with the increased consideration for stormwater, broadly speaking, in, as relates to greenhouses and other large-scale developments. So we are working towards that. We certainly meet with consultants regularly and go through 40 or 50 different applications and updates on all of that work wherever we can to try to facilitate review of those processes. We think, you know, there's, there's an awful lot of growth, and there's, I would argue, perhaps, an undercapacity in terms of support, and not just from an IRCA perspective, but I mean more so in terms of the consultant's perspective, in terms of providing the answers that the greenhouse sector needs and wants when they want to get things done. I don't know, Tim, if you wanted to add anything more to that?
That was perfect.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I can't believe Tim's left with a topic. I can't either.
Well, in order to regain the meeting, I won't comment. Okay, well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Do we need a motion to receive that? No? Thank you so much, very informative, always good to hear what's going on with IRCA and answer some of our questions. Thank you. Well, council, we're going to move on to the seniors advisory committee. Can I speak to that? I took it upon myself to speak with Melissa Bloomfield from Chartwell Retirement Community. She came to council a number of weeks ago and spoke in support of the seniors advisory committee, so I took our report to her and had a chat with her, showing her what we had done, what our report was, and she suggested that we share this report with a lady who has been, has worked on the seniors advisory committee in the city of Windsor. She's now retired and volunteers her time helping other people put together seniors advisory committees. She also writes grant applications for initiatives for age-friendly communities, and so I would ask if we could defer that until we can meet with her a little bit more. I have no complaints with the report at all, there's no, there's nothing wrong, I just want to make sure we have all our i's dotted and all our t's crossed. If there is an opportunity to get funding for anything that we might want to do, we might as well set the stage rather than adjusting our, our parameters. So a motion to defer then, councillor Hammond, and seconded by councillor Thiessen? Sorry, just a little moment. Anyway, all in favor? And that's carried. Oh, was there a question?
That's it. Just a timeline, worthy mayor.
It will be when I can meet with her, according to both of our schedules. We'll try and do that as quickly as possible. I'd like to see something in place by the time seniors month rolls around, which is usually June, which is June, so if we can get something in place. Every month is seniors month. Spoken by a true senior. With that, we will move on to the tourism branding agency, so I will call up Kieran Knapp and James Cox from staff. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. The purpose of my report tonight is to update council on Leamington's tourism branding program and to seek council's authorization to enter into a contract with a local tourism branding agency to provide tourism branding services, marketing services, and graphic design service for the municipality. So as, as council's aware, the tourism...
Well, in order to regain the meeting, I won't comment. Okay, well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Do we need a motion to receive that? No? Thank you so much, very informative, always good to hear what's going on with ERCA and answer some of our questions. Thank you. Well, counsel, we're going to move on to the seniors advisory committee. Can I speak to that? I took it upon myself to speak with Melissa Bloomfield from Chartwell Retirement Community. She came to counsel a number of weeks ago and spoke in support of the seniors advisory committee. So I took our report to her and had a chat with her, showing her what we had done, what our report was. And she suggested that we share this report with a lady who has been, has worked on the seniors advisory committee in the city of Windsor. She's now retired and volunteers her time helping other people put together seniors advisory committees. She also writes grant applications for initiatives for age-friendly communities. And so I would ask if we could defer that until we can meet with her a little bit more. I have no complaints with the report at all. There's no, there's nothing wrong. I just want to make sure we have all our i's dotted and all our t's crossed. If there is an opportunity to get funding for anything that we might want to do, we might as well set the stage rather than adjusting our parameters. So motion to defer then, Counsel Hammond, and seconded by Counselor Thiessen. Sorry, just a little moment. Anyway, all in favor? And that's carried. Oh, was there a question?
That's it. Just a timeline, worthy, Mayor.
It will be when I can meet with her, according to both of our schedules. We'll try and do that as quickly as possible. I'd like to see something in place by the time seniors month rolls around, which is usually June, which is June. So if we can get something in place. Every month is seniors month. Spoken by a true senior. With that, we will move on to the tourism branding agency. So I will call up Kira Knapp and James Cox from staff. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of counsel. The purpose of my report tonight is to update counsel on Leamington's tourism branding program and seek counsel's authorization to enter into a contract with a local tourism branding agency to provide tourism branding services, marketing services, and graphic design service for the municipality. So as counsel's aware, the tourism office manages an active tourism branding campaign designed to develop and support Leamington as a destination of choice for tourists. There are a number of separate elements to this campaign, which in 2019 include the development and promotion of the On the 42 Tourism website, the development of a website and web presence for the ongoing Taste Leamington project, the creation of tourism-related videos and videography, the design and production of print material for special events, and ongoing tourism-related digital content, the kind that you see on the 42 social media accounts and whatnot. The tourism office devotes considerable time towards ensuring that all of these products have a look and feel that is consistent with our overall tourism brand, which we've spent many years developing by Was Point. So all of the year's tourism branding projects were approved in the 2019 budget, and in previous years, the separate parts of the campaign would be tendered individually with separate companies, providing graphic design, web development, other related services throughout the year. However, research that we've done this year has indicated that dealing with one consistent agency for all tourism branding would allow for greater brand consistency, allow for the development of a long-term brand strategy to actually work with a branding firm to develop where we see our brand, what we see our brand evolving to over a three-year, five-year timeframe, and also reduce costs by bundling services and reducing the overall staff time needed to managing separate contracts. Accordingly, administration has issued a request for proposals for agencies that would be interested in providing these services for all of the municipality's tourism projects. The details of the RFP are outlined in my report. Five submissions were received and evaluated based on the proponents' previous work, their ability to meet the municipality's vision, their ability to deliver the service that we're looking for in a timely manner, and the overall cost of the proposed contract. Based on the results of this evaluation, administration is recommending that the contract be awarded to the Branding Loft, which is a local branding firm with considerable experience in this field. The tourism office has worked with the Branding Loft on several projects in 2018 and is very confident that the agency can provide a high-quality service to the municipality. The full scope of the branding agency contract is detailed in the report, and Kira and I would be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have about the contract or any of our overall tourism branding projects.
Great, thank you, James. Counsel, are there questions? Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but anyway, I'm looking at this, and with the quotes that you were giving, we don't see any competitive quotes here again. I know you're doing it on a scale by percentage of response or what they can meet, but again, we don't see any competitive quotes here. Were they all close? Were they, are they higher, they lower? Like, where did this particular one fall into place?
The recommended proponent was also the lowest quote by some margin. That was not the only criteria we evaluated it on, but yes, they were the lowest quote.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counsel Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We're going to move right on to the special events report, if you don't mind. Sarah? Thank you. We have folks in the audience from the Bank Theatre so that they don't have to stay through the boring parts. We'll move to the special events. Thank you.
Thank you again, Your Worship, and members of counsel. So the purpose of our second report tonight is to provide counsel with an update on the planning for the 2019 special event season in Leamington, seek counsel approval for a series of recommendations necessary to both approve a producer for the 2019 Summer Concert Series and also enable the municipality to implement a series of artisan markets along the revitalized Mill Street in Uptown Leamington. So as counsel's aware, the municipality had a very successful 2018 event season, the highlight of which, I think many people would agree, was the Music on the 42 Summer Concert Series, a series of six signature concerts that was designed to highlight the then newly constructed Seacliff Amphitheater. Overall, the 2018 municipal special events program served an estimated 25,500 visitors and residents, and that does not, that figure does not include third-party events like Hogsford Hospice or anything like that. So our overall aim for the 2019 event season is to repeat the success of the previous year while also expanding and diversifying our special events offering for our visitors and residents. So with regard to the Music on the 42 Summer Concert Series, the aim with the 2018 program, as we discussed at counsel at the time, was threefold. It was to establish the production requirements necessary for a successful event to be held at the amphitheater, developing a booking policy for the venue, which took those production requirements into account to ensure that all events that were taking place at the amphitheater were of a certain quality and of a certain scale, and also to generate interest from third-party events, outside agencies looking to put on special events in Leamington. So following last year's season, the tourism office reviewed this requirement. We prepared and approved a booking policy for the venue, and the tourism office also went out to solicit interest from third-party events looking to book the Seacliff Amphitheater for the 2019 season. That process ran from November to January, after which we, administration, scheduled around the third-party events that we had booked to continue with our program of ensuring that there's some form of special events or some form of entertainment happening at the Seacliff Amphitheater every weekend for the summer. We were also planning on continuing the partnership with the Bank Theatre to stage the successful Bank on the 42 Concert Series, a series of smaller concerts designed to showcase and highlight the amazing local talent that we have locally. So the result of all this is that the 2019 Summer Concert Series was to have three signature concerts that were part of it. So we, administration solicited bids from proponents that had a demonstrated ability to deliver concerts of the appropriate scope and reviewed those submissions based on cost. The details of this evaluation are included in the report. And based on this evaluation, we are recommending that the municipality retain the services of the Sun Parlor Players Community Theater, colloquially known as the Bank Theatre, to provide the Summer Concert Series, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a necessary agreement to allow that to happen. We're very excited about what's being discussed for the Summer Concert Series, and as soon as we have further details confirmed, we will, of course, update counsel. The other main event that is being planned for 2019 is the inaugural season of the Mill Street Markets. This is planned to be a series of seven art and artisan markets along the newly revitalized Mill Street, which will feature artisan vendors and highlight local food and culinary experiences. The first six markets will be held on the first Friday of the month, starting on May 3rd, with the Holiday Market held on the date of the Santa Claus Parade in late November. The revitalization of Mill Street presents us with an excellent opportunity to both expand and diversify our event programming in the town as a whole and specifically in Uptown Leamington, and also to build on the success of the 2018 art and artisan markets, like the Holiday Night Market that was held at the municipal, outside the municipal offices on the Santa Claus Parade last year. So as noted in my report, the sale of alcohol by vendors is a planned component of the culinary experiences of the Mill Street Markets. This report is requesting counsel approval for the culture and tourism developer to execute an application for the special occasion permit necessary to allow this to occur, and also to authorize the CAO to be a responsible person under this permit and designate other employees of the municipality as responsible persons as required to implement the markets as planned. My report lays out in full how the municipality has investigated the risks associated with this recommendation and taken the necessary steps to mitigate it. I will also note that the approved 2019 special events budget included $119,500 in approved funding for special events programming and supportive advertising, which includes both the funding for the Summer Concert Series and the Mill Street Markets. However, as I note in my report, since that budget was, since the budget was prepared in fall of last year, we have expanded the proposed scope of the Mill Street Market Program to take advantage of the opportunity presented by the Mill Street revitalization for increased programming in the uptown, and also to build on the success of the trial markets that we held last year. In light of this, and in light of the quoted amount for the Summer Concert Series from the Sun Parlor Players Community Theater coming well within the approved budget, we are recommending allocating an additional $35,000 from the approved special events budget to the Mill Street Markets. The full breakdown of the proposed changes in the overall Mill Street Market budget is included in my report for your reference. The final event that this report touches on is the outdoor movie nights. This event has been held for many years now and has traditionally been held at a waterfront location, either at the Leamington Marina or at Seacliff Park. However, we've encountered a number of logistical challenges to delivering this event consistently. The inflatable screen that is necessary to stage the movies requires considerable space to erect. For example, it is too large to be set up on the Seacliff Amphitheater stage. We have to set it up, last year we had to set it up in front of the stage. And as a result of this, a result of this space requirement, the screen is extremely vulnerable to winds and other inclement weather, which everyone knows we get a lot of along the waterfront here in town. This has unfortunately resulted in several cancellations in past, in previous years at cost to the municipality. If we cancel the program, we are not able to recoup those costs. So administration this year has been looking for more reliable alternate sites for the program, but as of present, has been unable to find one that is both appropriately located for the nature of the event and sufficiently large enough. With this in mind, we're requesting counsel's approval to suspend the outdoor movie night program for one year while administration reassesses both the logistics, the organization, and the overall demand for the events, and that we, the approved budget for the movie nights, which I believe is $7,500 for 2019, be reallocated to other tourism programming. So further details on the planned 2019 special event season are included in my report, and Kira and I would be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have about any of the report's recommendations or any of the planned 2019 special events. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Kira, did you want to introduce our guests sitting back in the cheap seats?
One of the concerts that we are proposing this year came forward as a recommendation from the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and we have Owana, who is the chair of the MIAC Committee here today. And the programming for that specific concert on August 17th has been entirely driven by the MIAC Committee and the ongoing discussions on how we can engage youth in our community and offer some programming specific to a younger demographic at our waterfront locations. So they've put a tremendous amount of work into this already, and we're really excited to continue to work on this project with them, and hopefully, a component of that will be a fundraising initiative from MIAC for purposes determined through that group.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Owana. She is also the chair of the MIAC Committee, and they've already come forward with some really great ideas. Always nice to listen to young people and hear their enthusiasm and also the really great ideas that come forth from them. I think we all get kind of comfortable in our ruts, shall we say, and when you hear them with their fresh ideas, it's always, it lightens your heart a little bit to hear that. So anyway, she came, we're appreciative that you came tonight. So are there questions for James and Kira? I'll start with Counsel Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor. James and Kira, thank you for your report, and I know the Summer Concert Series is, I enjoyed it. We've to a number of the concerts and I always enjoyed them. They always seem to be well-attended. I know I've had comments that it's a fair bit of money to put out for entertainment, but I think it's important, and I think it brings tourism to the area, and I think it's just a nice social evening, sitting on the bank of the Seacliff Park there on a Friday or Saturday night. It's always very much enjoyed. Mill Street, I'm looking forward to see what happens on Mill Street. Everybody is talking about Mill Street and what's going to happen, and there's comments for, there's comments against. We're looking to you guys to really kick off the season with a bang, with the first market, so looking forward to that. The only other comment I've got about around the Summer Concert Series, what time does it normally start in the evening? The only comment that I've had is that, could you please start it an hour, maybe an hour and a half later, so that we can go out, have supper, and at one of the local restaurants, and then go to the Summer Concert Series?
In past years, the concerts started at 7:00, and we listened to the feedback that we got from restaurateurs and have moved the programming to start at 8:00 so that people can do exactly that and enjoy dinner in the community.
Mr. Newfeld.
The comment I wanted to make with respect to Counsel Thiessen noting that there is a fair amount of money spent on the entertainment. The entertainment component is really only one part. The strategy is not only to offer entertainment to our residents and guests, but to entice others from outside of the community to come to our beautiful waterfront and see what we have done there. This is helping to create Seacliff Park and our waterfront, our Marina, our pedestrian pier as a destination. So it's kind of a twofold thing. We get entertainment, but we also entice people from outside of the community to come and see what we have done.
Counsel Hammond.
Your Worship, thank you. I just wanted to separate a little bit of the report because we have two folks here from the Sun Parlor Players, Leamington Bank Theatre, who have got a meeting to attend very shortly. I want to comment on the fact that last year, we, you know, they did a tremendous job down there. This isn't a moneymaker for the Bank Theatre. John Moore, who's sitting in the audience now, does a lot of work, and not that, not that they all don't, but to try to put these events on. So I just want to compliment them. I know they're waiting to leave because they have a meeting to attend at 7:00, so I just thought I'd make that comment before we continued on with any more things. So thank you to you folks. And you too, Michelle.
I'm glad you added Michelle because I was just going to... Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions in regard to this, a market on Mill. How is the rest of the town involved in that? And the reason I asked that question, I was talking to a, one of the individuals that own a business uptown and said that they are not involved or not asked to participate whatsoever. Is there like a community thing with this, or is it just strictly focused on Mill and what we're going to do there?
No, not at all. The vendor application is open to any vendors who want to apply and have a presence, and certainly, that's extended beyond the Mill Street businesses as well. We did have our new special events person, who I think it would be remiss for us to not mention that she started yesterday, Chantel Meadows, who did deliver notices to specifically the businesses on Mill, but certainly, anybody who wants to participate is welcome to submit an application, and it's open to all members of the community. Also, keeping in mind that the markets are only open from 5:00 until 10:00, so a good number of the businesses are closed, so they can close up shop and then participate in the market, or people are encouraged to, particularly in the uptown, shop before attending the Mill Street Markets. But yes, it's absolutely open to...
Thank you. And maybe, like, the vendors aren't really aware or whatever, would be anything that we could do to ensure that they've all been notified, or like, people stop into these stores and say how they can participate or whatever? I know there's a lot of interest in it, that's a great thing going on, but I hate to see anybody being left out, if at all possible.
Certainly, we've also got a partnership developed with the BIA, as well as the Chamber, who have circulated it to their membership as well in the community. So I would encourage the membership of those to keep in contact with their representatives who we are working with, but we are, if you're speaking specifically in the uptown, going door-to-door to all of the businesses in the municipality.
Basically, the stores that are downtown area, that are there, and I don't know how she got missed out on this or whatever, but I know that was a comment made in respect to that.
Yeah, and there's certainly still time for people to participate, even if they aren't able to participate in the first market for all of the rest of them. But yeah, I would encourage them to keep that dialogue open with the BIA as well, who are partners in this, in these events.
May I inform with that, if I may, Your Worship? I have another question. With the liquor licensing of the downtown area, we all know what happened, I guess it was in Amisburg, with the situations up there. Are we confident that we can actually keep this, I guess, a safe environment? I look at maybe the CAO or whoever that's going to be responsible for this, that how are we going to protect the municipality from such an incident happening that we would become liable?
The, as you can see in the report, there is somebody designated as the responsible person. I will have my name on that form, but I can't be there all of the time, and someone must be. So there will be others, other employees who will be designated as the responsible person for certain times. Now, there are also vendors who have, their employees have the SmartServ qualifications. So they will, too, will be responsible for ensuring that intoxicated people... So they will, too, will be responsible for ensuring that intoxicated people are not served, and of course, any of us that are going to be around there are going to make sure that that's taken care of as well. I don't know if Kira can expand on anything on that as well.
Certainly. So there's a number of factors that we've taken in, using best practices and risk mitigation factors. We've been in constant contact with the AGCO about these markets, as well as the OPP, to ensure that there's police presence, as well as hired security. Any of the gates have people checking IDs, and people are wrist-banded, regardless of your age, so we don't go by the 25 or younger-looking age. If you don't have a wristband, you don't get served alcohol, and there's strict regulations on serving, and we've made that very clear to the vendors who will be serving alcohol. So we're taking every precaution necessary, including posting signs with "safe alternative transportation home," and also encouraging, we've been looking into the possibility of possibly extending transit to and from the marina, or taxis various places in town, and keeping people notified about that. So we are certainly cognizant, and that, the situation hits pretty close to home, so we're taking every precaution necessary.
Okay, I appreciate the comments, and I guess if the administration is comfortable with it, I guess we are too, so thank you. And thank you for your efforts. I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing with this. It's, I know it's a lot of work, but the rewards will be great, I'm sure. Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say the same thing as Counsel Jacobs, good work you two. Your department takes on more each year, and it really does add to the, you know, the betterment of the community. It's, more people are getting out there each year, it seems like, and getting involved in our festivals and concerts, and it's being talked about. I work in Windsor, and people in Windsor talk, they look forward to our concert series up there. And that's kind of what my question is going to go towards here. We opened up, I think, the applications to host events, or rent events, at our amphitheater here last fall, and it ran to a certain time. I'm just wondering what kind of, or level of interest we're getting from, let's say, professional concert promoters, that may bring ticketed or admissioned events that would draw larger names to our area? Are we getting any feedback from, you know, firms in Toronto, or Michigan, wherever, that would bring some larger names to our community?
We've had some discussion with a number of concert producers. As you understand, putting on a for-profit concert, that there's a lot of organization that goes into it. So Hogsford Hospice, for example, had two years of planning before the first year, but we have, we have one new festival that is completely brand-new to the area, and then two additional events that have moved down to the Seacliff Amphitheater, so, and then some additional interest from probably three or four other groups that are looking to host events in future years at the amphitheater. So we are getting a lot of uptake, a lot of questions, and a lot of excitement about it.
Deputy Mayor.
Ruth, Mayor, thanks. I just want to, if we're going to suspend Movie Night, James, is there any contracts or anything signed? Like, I mean, there's nothing that we have to worry about anybody coming back? You've signed a contract, now you're cancelling Movie Night?
No, we haven't, we haven't entered into any contracts for the Movie Nights till this year yet.
Thank you. And also to the MIAC, that's our future counselors out there, it's very, it's a pleasure working with them, and I'm kind of looking forward to this concert they're having. I don't know, I don't know if I can body serve.
You might be a little old for that, sir. I've got a couple of questions, if I may. The Friday night little mini concerts at the marina, I've enjoyed them this, the last number of summers. Are we still going to do that? And if so, where is that in the budget? Is that in the marina budget?
That is in my budget. The acts have already been booked, and we did put out a bid in tender that closes on April 15th to have craft food and beverages on the marina patio this year, so expanding those services. Any of the Friday nights where there is Mill Street programming, there won't be programming at the marina, so we're not conflicting with our own programming, but yes, that is planned to continue.
Great, that's an excellent night, and that was, if there were complaints, that was the complaint. We'd like to have something to drink, something to eat, people would bring things down there. So this is nice, that, an opportunity to make a little profit there as well. When will you be releasing the list of the concerts? Because I know a lot of us are getting a little bit anxious to hear who's going to be featured.
Our hope is to have our special events guide printed by the third week of April, so in advance of that printing, so that we can get them. Soon as this is done tonight, then we can get the ball rolling and get some checks written and go from there.
Good. I just want to say one thing. The thing that I like about this whole aspect is it improves the quality of life for the residents in our community. I know it's great to draw people from outside, but to me, to have these places to go in our town in the summer, it doesn't cost money. We can have music basically from Thursday night, Friday night, till Tuesday night. Every night you can go to something, or every afternoon. It's a wonderful aspect to our community. It doesn't matter what age you are, you're going to be covered at some point in time. So for me, even if no one came, it would still be fine, because it just adds so much that I feel has been missing in the past. It brings people together, opportunity to socialize, people that don't have lots of family have opportunities to meet others. It's just, it's just such a wonderful venue. I think we're very lucky, very blessed to have this, the fact that someone thought of the amphitheater in the first place, and then we saw it through to actuality, I think, is, we will always have that under that star on our crowns, shall we say, this council? Well, maybe not Mr. Tieson, but the rest of us. It really, I think it will be a long, long, enjoyed feature in our community. So that's it for me. Thank you for all you've done, appreciate it, look forward to everything. Friday night markets, also, great, great opportunity. So with that, Counsel, what are your wishes? I just happened to look at the Deputy Mayor, so I'll accept his motion, seconded by Counsel Hammond, all in favor, and that's carried. Thank you both. And thank you to the Bank Theatre, Michelle and John. So now we're moving on to the request to close a portion of Parkdale Avenue, and that is Ms. Orton.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. As you'll see from the report, a developer has acquired the property formerly known as 29 Parkdale Avenue, as well as some other parcels on Parkdale abutting 29, for the purpose of building two multi-residential towers that would be renamed as 302 Shirk Street. In order to accommodate parking for that development, it is proposed that vehicular access be stopped at by means of a new cul-de-sac at the end of Parkdale, as shown on the construction plans which are attached to your report. The creation of the cul-de-sac would reduce the length of Parkdale, and it would require a conveyance from the municipality to the developer of the land shown as Part II on the draft plan of survey in your report. So in order to facilitate the development, that portion of Parkdale, as shown, would need to be first closed by bylaw pursuant to Section 35 of the Municipal Act, and then conveyed to the developer. While it's not required by the legislation, administration does recommend holding a public meeting regarding that proposed closure, so that council may hear comments from residents regarding the same. Notice of the meeting would be delivered directly to the residents of Parkdale, advertised in the local paper, and published on the municipality's website. The developer would be required to pay for costs associated with the closure, and a further report would outline any further costs and be presented to council in connection with the conveyance of the lands following the public meeting. So the recommendation is simply that administration be directed to schedule that public meeting to receive comments regarding the proposed closure.
Thank you, Ruth. Counsel, we'll start with Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruth, on this, you said that they have, or are tend to be, I guess, purchased number 25, and would this result in redoing the cul-de-sac, or do they intend on purchasing the other three or four homes that would be surrounding the cul-de-sac there? I was a little confused as to how this went.
As you can see on the Schedule A, there's an overlay of the proposed construction, and it indicates, just if you can slightly see it, where the current cul-de-sac exists on the aerial view. So this developer owns 29 Parkdale, so the end parcel, 25 and 23, 22, and then the vacant land, so all the parcels surrounding the cul-de-sac, except for 21, I believe, is owned by a separate individual. So the closure of Parkdale would be in connection with the extension, what is currently the cul-de-sac, and the proposal would be then that the developer would reconstruct the cul-de-sac as it's shown on Schedule A in that location.
Are you fine with that?
Yeah, I was just curious as to if they were going to purchase more property there or not. I really don't see the impact, it's just gonna, I mean, it's already a cul-de-sac there, it's a quiet street, which is going to be two houses quieter when this is done, I guess, but overall, I have no objection to the request.
I have Counsel Tieson next.
I guess you only, that answered some of my questions. The other was, the buildings that they're proposing to build, will they be the same as what's currently there on-site to match up with those? And I do want to see the public meeting. I think it'd be good to hear from those last, at least those last three houses there.
The proposal is for two 10-story apartment buildings?
Counsel Hammond, are you satisfied with your answer there, Counsel Tieson? Okay. Counsel Hammond, you got a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We took some time the other day to walk down there and didn't realize what a large piece of property that really is. And in looking at it initially, it really lends itself to this type of, this type of a building. But the question that begs to be asked and needs an answer to is, obviously, this didn't come up just overnight, so this has been in the planning for some times. So what was their contribution towards the sewer separation that took place, and the new sewers are constructed there? Did they only pay for 23 and 25? So that's the first half of that question. The other half is, if those two 10-story buildings would have been there, what would have been their contribution towards? Because you know that that question is coming from those residents who live on Parkdale. It's, it needs to be answered.
I believe we're looking for that information. They were assessed into that sewer separation project, and we're just, I think we're looking into that assessment.
I didn't mean that it had to be right now, I mean, over a period of time. I mean, the project, you know, and walking around, really looks like it's going to be great, but...
Okay, then we can look for that information.
Yeah, I didn't mean to have it right this minute, I'm sorry if I...
It's all right, we can come back with a more fulsome answer to it.
Well, and it's going to the public as well, public consultation, so there'll be opportunity. Rob, do you have the answer? Laura?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, and Rob needs to help out anyway, but they were assessed as part of the sewer separation program that Ruth mentioned. The assessments were based on frontage, and certainly as the development goes through our Development Services Group, sewer capacity is always considered, so certainly engineering wouldn't approve the development if there were limitations.
Yes, and just to add to that, we were aware, and they were given, given the size of the system currently in place, they were given an amount of capacity that could fit, and they were to design their buildings essentially around that. There was limited, servicing limitations unless they wanted to pay for additional infrastructure. So my understanding is they designed accordingly. I think an important distinction here between Peely Drive, as an example, where we use equivalent residential units, sewer units essentially, is that this was done on a frontage basis, which is the typical urban way in which we do sewer separation and assign costs to unit. It matches the local improvement process that has been in place for decades, and it aligns with how we've been doing sewer separations here in the municipality.
Well, thank you. I, I think those numbers, we need to know what those numbers are going to be eventually, if not right now, because those residents, again, are going to be impacted by this, because they're, you know, in shortening up that street, there's going to be construction trucks and all the rest of those things that have now, I mean, they've just gotten back to normal, you know, with, with the sewer separation, and now they're going to be impacted by this again, unless, of course, they come in from the other way. But I think that those folks are going to want to know, what are those numbers? And, and again, Rob, and I understand that we didn't do it like we did Peely Drive with respect to the number of toilets, if you will, as to what's going to be in there, so...
That's right.
Your worship, just, I mean, we can, we have the numbers right in front of us. I think what's important to recognize is the sewer component, what the residents pay on a project like, like Parkdale, is share of one of the two sewers. So unlike Peely Drive, where it is a sewer project, 100% of the cost of that initiative are sewer-related. This is a road reconstruction project, and it's a sewer separation project. And so really, you come down to the cost-sharing discussion of the one sewer. And again, it was done on a frontage basis. Your worship, through you, to Counsel Hammond, are you looking for exactly what their assessment was? It's in the assessment schedule, and it will be, I mean, it'll be public information when it is assigned to the properties. Oh, it has gone already? Okay, it has gone already. So it's already been public information and in front of council. Are you looking for specifically what those properties were charged?
Yes, and/or they're, they're going to want to know that. You know, the only reason I wonder, and I raise the question, Rob, is because, you know, with, with the cul-de-sac stopping where it does now, those folks that were on, like, the property on 25 and 29, didn't really, did they contribute towards the sewer separation? Because the road ended at the end of, at the end of 21.
Yes, yes, they contributed. Yes, they, if there was a legal lot, the owner of that lot paid an assessment.
So those properties on 25, 29, they were on Parkdale? Because the only access to that was from Shirk Street.
25 Parkdale?
Yep.
It was assessed?
29 was.
29 was as well. There's three lots, legal lots, that didn't have a municipal address, they were also assigned. Has to do with where the sewage was planned to go, so the sewage, the sewage from that development was planned to go through Parkdale, so they were, those lots were assigned part of that cost, based on their frontage.
Yeah, again, back to the question, and it doesn't have to happen right, right now, but eventually, when we have these general public meetings, I know that that question's going to be raised.
About, looks like about $44,000.
Okay. So roughly for four lots. I think it was roughly, I think each share was about 90-some hundred dollars, because I know somebody on the south side that had three lots.
Yeah.
The map that we have in front of us doesn't, doesn't show the house on 29.
29 was assessed, $8,900.
Again, is that good enough? Do you need, you want to know the final amount added up for all the properties?
In all of our interest, you know, for throwing out a number of roughly $44,000, I mean, that's going to be a question I know is going to be raised by those residents when we do have that open session, so we've already got that.
Yes, and that's fine, and, you know, the cost of installing a sewer pipe, pipes are sized such that they're incremental, and when you move up in a pipe size, it typically provides about 50% additional capacity. So, you know, when you're designing a pipe to fit an area, it's unlikely that it's, you know, the perfect pipe size, there's typically, typical, typically capacity remaining in that. So there wasn't a need to oversize because of their demands and construction cost, install a larger pipe wasn't required because of their demands. So essentially, they just paid based on their frontage.
I tried to look back in the past assessment for Parkdale, and I couldn't find my, didn't go through my founding cabinet far enough, but I didn't find it, so I was curious as to whether or not the house on 29 or 25 had contributed their share, knowing full, well, you know, knowing that, you know, that the cul-de-sac stopped prior to those, and I didn't know if they were assessed into that or not, so you're saying that they were. Thank you, thank you. knowing full well, you know, knowing that, you know, that the cul-de-sac stopped prior to those, and I didn't know if they were assessed into that or not. So you're saying that they were? Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Worthy Mayor, I have, I have two questions, and it would either be a yes or no answer. I'll wait till the, the public meeting. It's been said, but I just want it out there again. The sewer has enough capacity for this, and there's no cost to change the cul-de-sac to the municipality. So it's, yes, the sewer has enough capacity, and yes, it doesn't cost us nothing. Or no and no.
Yes, yes, I think Rob answered the question about the capacity, and the cost associated with the construction of this cul-de-sac would be borne by the developer. So there will be the opportunity, if council directs administration, to hold that public meeting for the residents to come and express any concerns they have about the potential road closure. Also, it, it has been identified so far by planning that there will be a zoning bylaw amendment required, so there will be a further public meeting regarding that potential change of use and the zoning bylaw amendment. So there will be further opportunity for the public to comment on that particular issue.
There, Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, like, you mentioned road closure. There's really not a road closure. You're just restructure, or reconstructing that cul-de-sac, is it not? Like, that road's gonna remain as it is. It's gonna be open, correct?
It's shortening the road, so the part two on the draft plan that was attached is where the current, most of the cul-de-sac currently exists, is on part two. So they will be shortening the road by removing that cul-de-sac, pushing it back towards the east. And so the part that would be closed would be that part two. So it's closed to traffic. It'll be closed to the public and conveyed to the private developer, if that's council's wish.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, couple things from me, if I may. So the, the people that were living these buildings will not be using Parkdale as entrance and exit in onto the building property?
That's correct. It appears that the, currently, it's showing that the access on the draft sketch would be from Shirk, and that would then be the municipal address.
Okay. I know the comment, "Might as well prepare yourself," but I think the public will say, "Why are we redoing something that's just done brand-new?" I think that's where you'll hear the biggest criticism. Did we know enough ahead of time that this was going to come, that we could have designed it to fit this need back when we were working on Parkdale? I'm just saying it because I do believe it's going to be out there, much like Counselor Hammond is saying, "Prepare yourself for that." The question about the dollars, you need to prepare yourselves for that. And it won't just be the people on Parkdale. Anybody who's going to read the paper or watch this on TV will say, "What in the heck? Now you're redoing a cul-de-sac, even if, even if it is the developer paying time, money, et cetera." Did you, did we know, did we know about this enough ahead of time that we could have planned accordingly or not?
Yes, we all want to answer. I guess that's a good sign.
I, I just thought, let's, let's put it out there, because it's going to be asked.
Your worship, at the time, it was, it was just speculation that a development may occur, and if, if we felt it was imminent, you know, we certainly would have tried to work with the developer and, and design accordingly. But at the time, as you can appreciate, we can't hold up capital projects in our capital plan because of, of an idea or some concepts that were put together. And unfortunately, it's one of those scenarios where a very short time after we finish our project, the developer decides, "Okay, it's a viable business plan. I wanna go, put a lot of resources to it, and it looks like it's making it happen now." So that, that's where it was at the time. And, and the other thing is that the developer is choosing this particular site, site plan for this location, and we are being accommodating by permitting, you know, various things to happen. We could very easily say, "We just built that road." Excuse me, adjust your site plan, because we're not tearing up a road, you know, that we just built. So in the interest of economic development and prosperity and development, you know, we're not doing that.
Great answer. We're, we're on board with you on that. I'm sure I speak for all of council. The fact that our housing situation is the way it is, and, and that we've got two 10-story buildings coming, that, that's good, bodes well for us. So council, your wishes? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Hammond, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to matters for approval. The minutes of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee meeting held February 4th, 2019, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Teason. Comments, questions? All in favor? Comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. The only comment that I had in reading through, that's quite a report, a bunch of, it's too bad that, is it Onna that's?
Onna, yes.
The new, I, I was a little taken back, though there are no young gentlemen on this committee.
Yes, there is, there is now.
There is now?
Massimo Mayori, yes, he just joined, so we're quite happy. I think he is too.
I thought these young ladies must have a boyfriend they can talk into doing this. So that, that's great. Yeah, it was a great report, too.
It's really nice if, if I can comment. I was going to leave it for open session, but with the AMO meeting, I met up with a number of mayors who have very young council members on their council. The one lady has a 22-year-old gentleman on her council as a counselor. Another council out of the north, the far north, and I can't recall what center, they, their MIAC group is very, very active with their council, with the idea of mentoring and guiding these young people into, hopefully, leadership positions at some point in time in municipal government. So it puts a, a little more important spin on MIAC. I think we all need to, to encourage our young people, particularly when you think that, when we look at the demographic of the voting public, tends to be the older people. We need to get our young people engaged, because this, the future is theirs, and they need, they need to have their voice heard. So anyway, we, deputy mayor and I really enjoy, don't we? Angela as well, we really enjoy the young people. And now that we have a gentleman, it, it makes it quite nice. Okay, so the motion's on the floor, all in favor? And that's carried. Minutes of the Leamington Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held February 27th, 2019. We need a motion, moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Hammond, all in favor? And that's carried. Other matters for consideration, there are none. Consideration of bylaw, Ms. Percy.
Bylaw 2219 being a bylaw to appoint municipal law enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing dog registration compliance for the municipality of Leamington. Bylaw 2319, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality at its special meeting held April 4th, 2019. That was for the quarter revision. Bylaw 2419, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the municipality of Leamington at its special meeting of council held April 9th, 2019, and that was the meeting at 3:30 this afternoon. Bylaw 2519, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held April 9th, 2019.
Ms. Percy? Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Jacobs, all in favor? Carried. Notices of motion, there are none. Open session, council and admin. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to bring up a situation that, well, actually, that happened to me, is the fact that I received a water bill, and I addressed this either to Laura or to Rob. Normally, the water bill runs around $100, and I got one for $400. And it's, you know, I went a little spaz, and I run uptown, and I talked with, with Nelson. And apparently, from my understanding is, is that we're supposed to be having these meters read each month. And after him doing some research into it, they're not reading the meters. So what happened was that they did some type of a calculation where it came back, where it had over $200 worth of assessments for overcharge for sewage, which went from a dollar some cents to $2.30 a cubic meter. In talking with the manager, he informed me that this is an ongoing situation that he incurs almost on a daily basis. And during that conversation, like, Essex Energy is doing our billing, however, they contract out, I believe, the water metering system. And so I, I don't know how many people, you know, run into this, but like, I have a pre-approved payment plan that goes out, they just take the checks out. So someone's not really watching that, you know, like, they're paying some severe charges. And I just wondered, is there anything that we can do, or is this an ongoing thing that we experience at the municipality? I know it's not our, I guess it is our issue in a way. However, can we do anything to make some type of correction on this?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just have to choose my words wisely. Your worship, I don't think it's a secret that administration and council hasn't been necessarily pleased with our current billing arrangement over the last couple of years. The issue of estimated bills as opposed to reads has been a service-level problem that we've been dealing with. As council's aware, we currently contract out our billing services to Essex Power, who in turn contracts out the meter-reading services to, to another third party. And it is that third party that we're having performance issues with. We've met with, probably met with them a half a dozen times over the last couple of years. We have another meeting once Shannon returns from vacation. We're going there again to meet with them to discuss these billing challenges. You know, this is something that you deal with when you have a contracted service like this. You have the inability to, to do it yourself, essentially, and so you have a contract, you know, with the company, so you're trying to enforce that service level and basically get the service that you're paying for. I think we, big picture, because we're implementing our, our AMI system, we're likely only have this billing relationship for another 12 to 18 months, but we're still going to have this billing relationship for 12 to 18 months. And so we expect a certain level of service, and that will definitely be one of the items that we once again bring up with them, is this challenge around these estimates being passed off as actual reads, because it does create problems for us, it creates problems for the customers. And, and Counselor Jacobs, what happened to you with regards to the overage on the pollution control plant sewer surcharge? That's the biggest issue. It's not just a matter of catching up on past reads. Basically, you used the water, you just didn't pay enough, and now we're catching you up. There can be financial implications if that greater than 21 cubic meters for sewer surcharge kicks in. Once our AMI system's up and running, and we'll bring report forward to council, talk about new billing strategies, who's going to do the billing, how we're going to do that. But again, in the meantime, we have this contract to manage, and, and we are managing it, and we're going to be meeting with them soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In respect to that, then, I would urge, you know, if anyone is watching this, that, you know, monitor your bills, and that, you know, that they can correct this by simply calling, I guess, into the water department to look after it. And while we're on the subject of water, I, I would look at, if I may, the possibility, I know Windsor has just gone into this, was passed in their budget, and I guess some other communities are doing it. And I can't see us doing it in the current year, but when we get into our own metering system and billings, the possibility of averaging usage, and during the summer months, for those individuals that wanna water their lawns and gardens, because we like to make our municipality a beautiful place to be in, the possibility of reducing the sewage charge during those periods of time. Now, I don't know how the city went about it, and I don't know if the rest of you on council heard that during the city Windsor budget, but they went into the average, I don't know how many months it would be, but it's just something maybe administration could explore. And in the, as we make our transition into our billing process of these new meters and everything else, that maybe we could, you know, maybe participate in some type of a program like that, because I think it would be sure appreciated by a number of residents in the municipality.
Mr. Newfelt?
I am quite familiar with that, with that program, and that is something we can, administration will consider when it, when we get our own billing systems in.
Appreciate that. And I think there's a lot of individuals that like to water their lawns and take care of their gardens, but, you know, that, that additional surcharge on, on sewage really cuts it back in a hurry. I know it does for me personally as well. But, you know, just some food for thought if we could. I think it'd be great.
Rob, did you have an opinion on that?
Your worship, I did want to point out that that is something we could consider, but, but we have to remember that essentially, the, the reason we charge sewer surcharge is to pay for, for the operation of the pollution control plant. Our model is no more complicated than total cost of the plant divided by number of cubic meters of water sold equals your sewer surcharge rate. And so if we were to take, you know, today's, this year's consumption as an example, and basically reduce, you know, based on summer peaks, that's going to reduce our total number of cubic meters of water sold. Essentially, it's going to drive up the price, the, the per cubic meter sewer surcharge for everyone else. Now, if we started as some sort of base year, you know, perhaps we could consider that, consider something such that if you use more in the future because of this program than you have essentially used in the past on a per-customer basis, maybe there's a way we could recognize that. Otherwise, everyone will end up paying more because of that program.
I'm a little confused with that, because if you average it out, if I'm using, say, 10 cubic meters a month for the first six months of the year, and then during maybe, what, June, July, August, I go to 15 cubics, are you saying that we should be charging sewage on that additional five cubics for those three months? Is that what you're referring, or could you not?
Yes.
I guess what I'm going with, the averaging it out would be the process? Am I losing it, or?
Well, we would, through your worship, we, we would have anticipated your usage, your higher usage through those summer months in predicting the, the total number of cubic meters of water used. So your previous behavior would have been considered in, in estimating how many cubic meters of water would be sold, which in turn then dictates what the total cost of sewer surcharge per cubic meter is. So we were already, that spike in usage through the summer months already forms part of the basis in the financial model to determine what the rate is.
Mr. Newfelt, did you want to speak?
Just, just briefly. And so then, the so what is, because we already take into consideration the total consumption, regardless of when it is taken, if we create a new program, under the, under the rationale that if I'm putting water on my lawn, it's not hitting the sewer, so you're not treating it, so why shouldn't I be paying for the treatment of that water, right? Okay, fair enough, but what that does is then it takes that quantity of water out of the equation that we normally set our sewer costs, and will drive up the cost of the water that actually does come back into the sewer. So one way, one way or the other, the sewer plant needs to be, needs to be paid, made whole, and so if we reduce the amount that you're spreading on, on your lawn, it's going to increase the amount per, per cubic meter of the water that is coming to the plant.
So in essence, what you're doing, though, is you're penalizing an individual that is watering, because your, your surcharge after, was it 21 meters, Rob, you said, or 20 cubic meters, is increased. So once you reach that level, then you're going to $2.30 a cubic. So then, because I wanna water my lawn, I'm gonna pay double surcharge. That's basically what you're telling me.
Yeah, some, some people call it conservation, attempts to, for the, for the wise use of our natural resource, yes.
Well, at least incentive for conservation, right? Back in the day, when we were unmetered, there was many a gentleman that would let his hose lay on the driveway as he wiped down his car, and then he'd spray it again, and so on and so on. And that's, that's what gets us into these situations, right? We're, we're wasteful for a number of generations, and then we pay, so...
But if I may, Madam Mayor, I, I still would like to admit to explore that possibility, if, you know, if it's feasible and, of course, possible.
Okay. Who else do I have? I have Counselor Teason down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question is around business registration. Had a call from a, a business owner who, last year and this year, signed up, is registered, also does some work for a couple other businesses who have not registered, and say that they're not going to register until they are forced to, haven't registered in the past, don't intend to in the the past, don't intend to in the future. What, what is our plan on enticing companies to register, businesses to register? And do we know what the current compliance rate is?
Whenever we have information about a business that has not been registered, we reach out to that business administratively through our licensing assistant, providing them with the information about the bylaw and the application. And then we follow up if we don't hear back. This year, since we have gone through the process last year of educating the public, if we don't hear back from that business, then we would take those enforcement steps. I know that Angela has been busy over the last number of months consistently reaching out to new businesses that we become aware of through whatever means that might be. I would encourage whomever you have been speaking with to advise us as to the names of those businesses, so we can reach out. Those are the ways that we find the businesses that haven't been registered, is through third parties, through people letting us know that they're out there, as well as, you know, our own tools such as looking through Facebook, looking through the paper for advertisements, and just through our own other outreach opportunities.
So just a follow-up to that. Before I even got to ask the question or make the comment, well, tell us who they are, this person cut me off and said, and I'm not going to squeal on them, because if I do and they find out, I'm out of business. So people don't want to squeal on each other, especially when they're working for the people. We may just need to come up with a better plan to find them. I don't know what the answer is, but we need to look into it. If we're going to, if we're going to keep this bylaw, we need to look into it and get better compliance. Do we know what the compliance rate is? Second half of that question.
We'd have to know how many businesses are out there. So I don't, I didn't think that we would have immediate compliance within the first year, the second year, the third year, maybe the fourth year, maybe the fifth year. It's going to take time. And I think once we have some opportunities for enforcement, and we already have started down that road with a, with a couple of businesses that have, such as your friend has suggested, refused outwardly to apply, we have ticketed those individuals. And that would be the step that we would take if we are faced with that form of resistance. It hasn't happened often, but I expect that the longer that we reach out and try to, to reach the businesses that have not yet applied, given our educational opportunities and our outreach that we have had with, with our business community, that we will probably be meeting some more resistance, outward resistance, and we'll have to take those enforcement steps, which we're happy to take, because once some fines are levied in the amount of $1,000 against these businesses, perhaps they will find it more reasonable to just comply.
If I can make a comment, Paul, it's too bad, because we never saw this as being, you know, hammers down on businesses. We were trying to even out the playing field for the ones who, who go to the expense of opening a storefront. This, this wasn't what people are taking it as, and that's the too-bad part. I guess we, we need to be our own advocates for this. It's trying to get people so that we know what's, what's out there, if we can be of help to you, make sure you and your customers are safe and accommodated and all that kind of thing. That was really what we wanted to do, was just to have a handle on it, make sure that people are doing the right thing. It was never meant to be this giant fist from the sky looking to pound people into submission. So I'm hoping with time that our residents and our business people will realize, they won't probably take it as being for their own good, but just for the collective good. And, and we weren't trying to make a million bucks out of this. That was never, again, our intent. It was just to make things an even playing field for everybody. You know, and, and some of these people that are complaining, well, are people who have a storefront, and they were beefing at us because Joe Blow was opening the same kind of business in his basement, and not paying this and not paying that. Well, come on now, we're, we're trying to even it up. We're trying to make it better. So anyway, that's, that's my soapbox. Paul?
Councillor Thiessen?
Just one more question of that, then. So if somebody comes and looks for a permit for changing building alterations, or comes for a site plan agreement or something, are we asking them and telling, and making sure that they're signing up at that time? Or if they come to us for a CIP program, or anything, any reason that they walk in the door here, the first question we ask is, are you registered before we hand any money over or any permits over?
Yes, we have a good working relationship with all the departments, so the fire department will advise us of any businesses that we're not aware of needing to be licensed. I know Denise in Building has identified to people that they do need a business license and has spoken with Angela. So we do communicate between the departments.
I have the deputy mayor next.
Deputy Mayor, thanks. I've got a few here. I want to leave Rob with a little, see if he can find this place. How do you start a neighborhood park? Because neighborhood, no, the grass is cut, it's beautiful, the neighbors take care of it, and they would like a park on La May Street. That's the one. I'll, I'll speak to you about it later afterwards, but all the neighbors, of course, being the new guy in the block and having to go to a mailbox where everybody congregates, like the water cooler, this was brought up to my attention, and I never knew the future street was going to be called La May. So I don't know, you look at your records. Also, worthy mayor, it was my pleasure, along with Peter and Kira, to attend the launch of the Peely Islander II. It's a beautiful vessel, 12 years in the making, and I look forward to taking the visit when it becomes the official launch, when we can do it. And also, you get a different perspective of the pedestrian pier from that height, taking a picture down, how it looks too, so it's beautiful. And then my final one is at the chamber today at the, the meeting. The Chamber golf tournament is Wednesday, May the 15th, at 12 o'clock with a shotgun start at the Erie Shores Golf Club. And it's kind of ironic if I say, you know, spaces are filling up fast, because it sounds like the old used car salesman, but they already have more people now than they did last year. So you have, looking for a few more, but just to try to get it going. So they're looking for foursomes, and I put your name forward. And let's, let's go with that. So thank you.
Was that my name you put forward? Or whose name? Councillor Hammond.
Your Worship, thank you. There was some interest we had earlier on in going through the bank seat for council members, and something is arranged for this coming Friday at 2:30 for all of those that want to go through. It should only take a half an hour if you're interested. So 2:30 this coming Friday afternoon. The other thing, and you, I don't know, Mayor, if you were going to talk about this during your open session, about the exchange of jerseys with the mayor of Chatham, were you going to talk to that?
I was going to, but I'm sure your point of view would be more interesting than mine.
Not likely. Yeah, due to a bet that took place between our illustrious mayor and, and the mayor of Chatham, Mr. Caniff, about who was going to go further in the playoffs, the Leamington Flyers or the Chatham Ruins. Obviously, everyone knows that the Leamington Flyers went further. So as a result of that bet, Mayor Caniff of Chatham is now going to be wearing at his next council meeting a Leamington Flyer jersey with his name on it. The presentation was made yesterday, the day before, yesterday, Donna Wheatley, and he's very receptive, he seems like a real nice gentleman, and there's going to be a lot more of that. We're going to get a film, I guess, or something, a video, yes, of all of this presentation, and it should be exciting to, so we want to tune into the Chatham council meeting. And that's, was it last night already? Oh, okay. Oh, we were last night. Okay, so that's all I have. So I don't know if you're going to go any further with that or not.
No, I think that was great. You covered it. That was fun, though. I just wanted to say a couple of things, since I've returned from vacation, I've been meeting with lots of people. I, you know, I meet with probably two, at least two to three residents a week, over and above phone calls, et cetera. So just, so you know, they come to my office and we chat and figure things out and try and find solutions. Anyway, I wanted to talk to you for a minute about the AMO position I was appointed to. Went to an inaugural meeting in Toronto on last, in the end of last week. I was very impressed with the caliber of their employees. It's quite an interesting organization. We're so always involved in the politics of everything, and, and when we go to upper levels, we're always used to hearing party politics, and they are definitely not affiliated with any party. So they are accommodating themselves for the new party in power. So they learn what their theory and what their philosophy is, and they, almost like chameleons, change themselves in order to fit in with that, so that they can get the best for the people they represent, which are the residents of the province of Ontario. So I really enjoyed myself. I am working also with Three Lady Mayors, which is a very nice opportunity for me. I will say Mayor Patterson had been appointed to that position, and then when I was elected, Mayor Macdonough asked me to consider putting my name forward. So there were 11 positions with 41 applicants, so I'm very happy to say that I was appointed to the board. So again, and I thank you for your support. And then I wanted to tell you for a minute about the coffee chats that we had on Saturday here at the municipal hall. The idea was to interact with our residents, to hear their concerns, and I told them when they came, I'm available to listen to compliments as well. And I will say, we got compliments along with, yes, we did, numerous ones. We had 58 people show up. I wasn't able to speak with everyone. We were there from 10 o'clock till noon. I got here at 9:30, there were already people at the door. By quarter to 10, there were 20 people waiting at the door. So it definitely is something we're going to continue doing on a fairly regular basis, and we're going to move the site around different areas in town. We'll probably do the Sherre complex, a couple of parks, and the nice weather and so on. So it's just, and the new library when it opens up, yes. So it's just a matter of getting out and talking to people and being accessible. I had a couple of councillors join me as well, which was very helpful, because they could field some questions. Staff did too. Kelly and Andrea also answered questions, so it was very, it was great. We had coffee, and then Chartwell donated two big platters of, of treats. Again, a very generous thing. And then I was going to say, tell you about Mayor Caniff, but you beat me to the punch, so yeah, it was good. It's been good. Busy week this week, busy week ahead. Our schedules are, are packed, but it's, it's all for the, all for the greater good. So looking forward to every day, get up in the morning and think, what's the challenge today? And it's, it's good, very good. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Councillor Jacobs, welcome back, by the way, seconded by councillor Wilkinson, all in favor. And that's carried. Good night.